This conference will now be recorded.
As soon as I find my agenda, I give it away. Want to call the roll, please?
Member Corolla?
Present.
Member Sigurdsson?
Present.
And Vice Chair Colley?
Here. I'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, with its states and its one nation under God. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, now is the opportunity for public comment. Anybody from the public would like to make a comment? Mr. Brown?
Okay, just for you.
Thank you.
Jerry Brown, Harvard Brown. I just wanted to comment on a proposal that's floating around either underground or above ground about trying to eliminate the review of the construction projects. I mean, I think someone is interested in trying to get the projects quicker through the system, and when you stop off here and have a public review of it, then that slows it down. So I don't know who's going to suggest that. That instruction has to come from the commissioners. But I wanted to just say that I think it's an important component that the public gets an opportunity to look at whatever project is being built. You can't stop them. That was never the case, anyway. But you could, in the past, they slowed them down and asked for changes, and I think that irritated some people because it extended the time. You either approve or delay with some changes, but you never could reject outright, cancel them, and have them redo it. But nonetheless, whatever happens, it's going to come to you as an assignment, as I understand it. I think there needs to be a public review. If you just look at that new house on Corren that sits up on the hill, and you walk in front of it, you'll see what I mean. I mean, it's a huge structure for that location. Beautiful, concrete stucco with a metal roof, but it's too big for that location. That's just my feeling about it, and the landscaping is not what I would select. At any rate, those things are reviewed by the public when they come to you before. Am I correct?
To my knowledge.
Yeah. Okay, let's just comment. So I want you to just keep an eye on that one. You get your assignment from the commissioners themselves. You know that there are people in the public who care about what's going on.
Point well taken. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. For the public comment portion, approval of the minutes. Before us are some minutes that, adopting the minutes from September 17th, 19th, September 19th, and July 18th, 23?
Yes.
I don't know, can I vote on that? I did read. Yeah, that's a good question. I think we can. But what's a, what's a, it's a good question.
You can certainly vote, even if you weren't a member, because otherwise we'd never get the minutes approved if the board keeps changing.
I didn't know this was the wrong year. We didn't have a meeting on the 16th and the 18th of July, and then I saw that it was a different year.
Yeah, no, I know. I saw that when I was reading it before.
So absolutely, even if you weren't here for the minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Sir Second? Thank you. Any comment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the quasi judicial hearing. The first one is for 6726 North Ocean Boulevard. Kelly?
Is there any ex parte communications?
None from my end. Any ex parte communications? Okay, we'll proceed with the hearing. Want to swear in whoever plans to testify?
Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand.
Anybody wishing to speak?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you have been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to make the presentation on behalf of the town?
Mr. Chairman, Corey O'Gorman, town planner.
Oh, thank you.
I'll do the introduction for the town. This is a development plan review application for a new house at 6726 North Ocean Boulevard. The project includes four bedrooms, four baths, four full baths, two half baths, a summer kitchen, a two and one car garage, pool, spa, and pool deck. The staff has reviewed the plans in accordance with the land development codes, zoning regulations, and for site development. The recommendation is for approval, subject to the conditions in the town engineer's memo dated September 30, and subject to review by the planning and zoning board in accordance with the development plan review requirements in section 6356. The town engineer's memo includes items that need to be addressed during the building permit phase and for development plan review on behalf of the planning and zoning board, as outlined in the staff report. That includes a review of the relationship of the building to the site, relationship of building and site to the domain areas, and building design itself. Once again, the recommendation is for approval subject to the conditions, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if we can. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Come forward.
Good morning. My name is Richard Bremer. I'm with RWB, Laneras Architecture, 3000 North Military Trail, Suite 209, Boca Raton, Florida. I have been sworn in. Today, I'm here to review and discuss a proposed new two-story family residence located at 6726 North Ocean Boulevard, the Alvera Residence. Kelly, if you go to the survey or sheet A 1.1 of the existing structure. So this new home is replacing an existing two-story home built in 1997 with approximately 3,906 square feet under air and 5,310 square feet under roof. The existing finished floor elevation sits at 7.26 NABD. You can also go, you can just scroll to the A 3.0 and A 4.0, that's the floor plans. The new home will be a two-story Spanish Mediterranean-style home with a square footage of 4,600, I'm sorry, 4,065 AC square feet and 6,339 total under roof. It will have four bedrooms, four baths, two half baths, three-car garage, a two-in-one split, open plan concept, pool and pool deck, and nicely appointed hardscape and landscape. Kelly, if you can scroll back to the site plan, which is A 1.0. The proposed home sits on 100 wide by 137 deep lot, with the rear having a western exposure to the canal views and the front to North Ocean Boulevard. The house sits within the required setbacks of 25 feet to the front, 25 feet to the rear, 15 to the sides. The new finished floor elevation will be at 10 feet NABD and meets the FEMA flood zone requirement, height requirements. The garages will be at 7 feet NABD, with the edge of pavement, the existing edge of pavement at 3.2 NABD, with an approximate slope of the driveway at 7.3%, the pool and the pool deck will be approximately 9.5 NABD with steps to the side yard at 7.8 NABD, and then that's step down to the new dock area, which is at 6.0 NABD. The retaining wall to the rear of the pool deck will be at 9.3 NABD. Kelly, can you go to the renderings of A 0.1 through A 0.4? The Spanish Mediterranean-style elevation has a clean and simple feel with the use of the alvaster paint color, stone trim, and surrounds, wood outriggers and brackets, and stone sofa detail. The roof will be a red antique terracotta blend, bronze windows, dark simulated wood garage doors and front door. The height and scale of the entry and overall massing is sensitive to the FEMA height requirement, trying to create a more human-scale approach and feel from the street and to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors. Kelly, if you can go back to the site plan at A 1.0. There will be a paved circular drive to help navigate leaving and entering along Ocean Boulevard. The driveway, there will be steps up to the, from the driveway, there'll be steps up to the front entry. The front of the house at the garages, the front entry, and theater will be consistent to a one-story feel, and there will be landscaping on both sides of the entry as well as in the driveway island. At the rear of the house, there will be an open field with covered linnies and balcony areas facing the pool and canal. There will be simple aluminum rails at the balconies and aluminum spiral staircase to access from the pool deck to the balconies above. There will be a simple pool and spa design, plus a sunken fire pit area. The south side and the north side and along the front, there will be the privacy retaining walls at the allowable required heights. The driveway entries will also have privacy rolling gates. The septic system will be located to the north side, and there's also a generator located on the north side at a five-foot setback properly landscaped and behind privacy walls. Location of the generator is due to the proximity of operable doors and windows on the north side. Overall, the new proposed home, hardscape and nicely landscaped, will enhance and create a fresh look along North Ocean Boulevard. But now, if you please allow me to answer any architectural questions. And then Louis from Majestic Views is here to discuss the hardscape and landscape. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we have discussion? Any other comments? Thank you. Any comments from the public? Back to the commission. Any discussion on this? Looks fine. No discussion? I don't have any comments. Nice job. It really does meet, everything you said was pretty accurate, does fit within the community. Thank you very much. This time, chair will entertain a motion to consider the approval with conditions. Motion to approve with condition.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
How many fire, sunken fire pits over there? It's a great idea.
Sunken fire.
It's really good.
Okay. Let's see. The next one is the development plan for 113 Island Drive South.
Good morning, chair, commissioners. Corey O'Gorman, town planner. This is a development plan review for a new home at 113 Island Drive South. The proposal includes five bedrooms and office, six full baths, one half bath, one and a two-car garage, pool, spa, and covered loja. The project had been approved by planning and zoning, and some work had been done. Unfortunately, the permit had expired, or the development plan review had expired, which is why it's before you again. The staff has completed their review in accordance with the land development codes, zoning regulations, site development requirements, and recommends approval, subject to conditions that are outlined in the report, including the memo from the town engineer, which has attached an item in the development review report regarding the, what appears to be an encroachment of the guest suite bathroom on the second floor, needs to be corrected, and of course, subject to the planning and zoning board review under the development plan review requirements for relationship of the building to the site, relationship of building to, and site to the joint areas, and the building design. Once again, recommendations for approval, subject to the conditions, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks.
Before we get further, can I swear already in?
Sure.
If anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you have been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
So to clean that up, everything you just said previously, do you swear and affirm that that's true?
Yes, sure I do.
Okay, so you.
I'm trying to gather this.
Okay, all right.
You've sworn in on once.
No problem. No problem. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good morning. Richard Bremer. I'm here presenting the project in 113 Island Drive. As you heard from the, you know, description, it's a particular project that was already, you know, approved, and we had to work with, you know, existing conditions to meet, you know, all the city requirements, the site conditions, and also the client's, you know, wishes as far as this property. So based on that, we pretty much kept the same footprint of the original house that was approved by the town, and we started building on top of that. It's, like I mentioned before, it's a five-bedroom, six-and-a-half bathrooms, two full car garages, and one compact garage. Basically, it doesn't meet, it doesn't have the 20 feet in depth. We have a pool, office, it's two-story residence, and, you know, as was mentioned before, we have met all the setbacks and code restrictions of ours, FAR, and site requirements. We're particularly, you know, happy with the design at this moment. I think, we believe that it fits in the proper, in the neighbor, you know, quite well, and that's basically it, because, you know, we're trying to fit the new. Sorry.
Okay.
I always get nervous with you guys.
I know a reason to.
My speech is.
We won't bite. Yeah, we're not that intimidating. Come on.
I know you won't bite, no.
A substitute player to come up and, no.
I wish I had one, yeah. Yeah, one thing that was mentioned, it was, you know, encroachment of the second floor, and I believe, and I wrote in my letter answering the staff, that we have up to a 25% encroachment allowed. We're at 19%. So, I'm, sorry, 25 square foot allowed encroachment, we're at 19 square foot encroachment. So I don't know if that was reviewed and from my letter when we submitted to the staff. Just to clear that portion, as far as that comment, that was there, the condition.
The condition.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that is it. So what they're saying is that the approval was with, the recommendation was satisfying that condition.
Okay, perfect.
So when you're done, we'll get back to them and see if that's been resolved.
Okay.
We might have other questions.
Perfect.
Anything else? Anybody else from your team would like to speak?
We have the builder and the owner, the developer and the owner.
Okay.
Oh, one thing, if you don't mind, come here, please. So I feel more comfortable. Another thing that, you know, I wanted to mention also, the staff recommended also that the town is about to raise or is recommending raising or they're thinking about raising all the seawalls. I just want to mention that we have talked to our civil engineer, landscape architect, and Charlie also, that eventually, when the height is been established, as far as the new seawall heights, we're willing to work and, you know, we designed the tier. We have a very small seawall area, and we have steps and tiers, you know, basically shelves coming down. So that can be addressed at the moment, that the new seawall height is.
You don't have to wait for us. You can do that now. There's lots of seawalls going in.
Yeah, because I was talking to the civil engineer, and he didn't know what the new established, you know, seawall is going to be, the height? Five feet? Okay. So we can start designing that now.
Stick around for the second half of the meeting.
Hey, no one's going to get the answer. Perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll be quick. My name is Charlie Dullum. I'm from Louisville, Kentucky. I'm the applicant, the owner of the house, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I grew up and coming to Delray. My folks had a house since I was 10 years old in Delray. They're no longer with us, but, and then I had a house over on Adams Street for a short period of time, and love Ocean Ridge and looking forward to being a part of the community. I just want to introduce myself.
I'm glad you did. Mr. Dullum, Mr. Beck, your neighbor's in the back.
Oh, you Bernie Gollum son?
Yes, sir.
Well, I know a Bernie group.
Okay. Mr. Beck, are you, where are you in relation to my house?
Next store.
Oh.
And I've had some problems.
Sorry, I set you up.
I flew down, I was planning to go and knock on some doors and check with folks and see, introduce myself, leave my card, and call me if you got any problems. So, well.
Thank you.
Well, I'm more than available. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Any comments from the public? I do have, I do have some questions, if you don't mind. Whoever designed. So, you know, it's great, and I'm usually not one to pick on anything, but I just have to ask a question. You know, the drawings that you have, and this is with any color rendering. If you want to come back up? Thank you. It's a little misleading, especially, let's go to page seven.
I don't know which page seven is.
P seven. P seven.
Right before that one.
I'm sorry. So the, you know, it's not anybody's fault, or everyone does this, is that the drawings, it's kind of misleading because the front of the house does not look that way. It's not flat going right into the garage. There's a height there. You follow me?
Yes.
Right, so the finished floor is much higher than what that appears to be.
Actually, if you look in the center, we have all those steps with the planters on the side, so the garage, in fact, is.
Is going to be lower?
It's much lower, yes.
Okay, all right, good. So the only comment I have is that, that wall right there, straight ahead, you see how it's.
On the left?
On the left, right. That's a, that's a pretty stark wall. Is there a way to soften it a little bit? I mean, it's your design, I'm not commenting, but I am commenting. It's, that just kind of stood out because it's going to be sitting so high, that's, you know, there's, there's no feature there that just breaks it up like, that's pretty common. There's typically, and even if you look at our design manual that's going way back, you know, there's, there's those things that try to break up those types of walls or recommendations.
Yeah. One thing I want to point it out is that the houses, in fact, is set up, the finished floor of the house is set up at the, you know, required FEMA flood elevation.
No argument there.
And then if you look at the civil drawings, the starting of the, you know, the edge of the pavement is at 4.4. The base of that walls on the left is only a foot higher than that. It's at 5.3. So it's not, in fact, the rendering depicts quite well because there's not enough slope. The, the start change in, in grade happens behind the walls. All that is at the lower elevation together with the garage, at the five-foot range.
Right.
So it's only a foot above the, the edge of the pavement.
Okay.
The, I just.
I may not be making myself clear.
You mean a hedge in front to make it soft.
Well, no, see the top of the wall? See the, from the garage height up?
Oh, that?
That's going to sit up pretty high.
Oh, that wall? I thought it was the side wall on the side, the one that is covering all the.
The one that's facing the street.
That one, okay. Actually, we did, let me see on this page. If you go to page five, Kelly, sorry. Yeah, they, Kelly, I thought we, well, on the second round of, you know, plans when we submitted the revisions, if you don't mind, I can approach the board.
So are you telling me that there is some feature right there?
Exactly.
So that's the one we should rely on?
Yeah, you see the single car garage?
Right.
There's the double one. We have another set of windows below that because we felt the same way. It was too much concrete between the garage and the windows, and one element that we added was the landscape element, the boulevard, and also we added another set of windows below to make the windows a little bit longer and less concrete.
Is there, is there an architectural?
That's that double window here.
Is there an architectural feature at the top that's shown?
It's, oh, you, yes, you do have the correct one.
So is there a feature right here, or is this just a blank, blank grid?
That is a parapet, a triangular, that is a triangular parapet on top.
Okay.
And then to the side, you have the smaller one that mimics the one that is on the staircase.
So that's the internal. So it's still going to be, there's no, there's no feature. Could you go back to page seven, please? Is that how it's going to look, except for the size of that window?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no feature at the top?
Like a trim or something?
A trim?
No.
It's just a flat?
It just cleans, and then you have that parapet with the small, you know, flat ridges.
Okay, but the windows are going to be, I think that does.
The windows, much so, it's like on the drawings that you have.
Okay, that does, that does break it up.
Definitely, that breaks it up. It was too much concrete on that elevation, so that's why we added the longer windows.
Okay, listen, everyone's subject to their own, yeah, that's the bad thing about these things, you give an opinion, but I, I'm not going to comment, you know, with anything else, except I do have a question. What's the deal with the condition? Is that an issue? Because you're saying recommend with conditions of dealing with that, and he's saying it's not an issue. What is it? Is it an issue or not an issue?
Well, the background is that the encroachment that's allowed is for balconies and eaves and things of that nature.
Okay.
It allows up to 25 square feet of encroachment for a balcony. It appeared from the second floor plan that although, it was very clear that some of the balcony encroach, which is fine, it also looked like the bathroom for the guest suite was also an encroachment, unless I was misinterpreting the plan.
No, that's correct. You're correct.
Okay. There's, there's no allowable encroachment in the setbacks for any habitable space. So if that is the case, if the bathroom does encroach in the setback, the condition is correct, it does have to be changed. So that would, that would be a condition of approval.
Okay, so do you, because I want Mr. Dullum, I want Mr. Dullum to start building right away. I want him, I want him to be the neighbor.
I misunderstood then that portion of the rule, and I thought it was encroachment, not specifically for balconies.
All right, so we have an understanding that that will be corrected?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other?
Not a problem.
Good, I'm glad I clarified.
Thank you.
Any other, sure, no problem. Any other comments? Any corrections? Anything?
Nope.
Good, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Hearing none? Oh, by the way, didn't, any ex parte communication?
No.
None amongst us? I haven't had any respect to this, other than my own visual, walking by it every day. And we welcome you to the neighborhood. Glad to have you aboard and to proceed forward. It's been a few years since that's been going on, and so we're glad, we're glad that you're coming, and we look forward to having you. Are you going to root for Louisville this Thursday, or Friday, Saturday?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. I can't, I can't approve this. Wrong answer. Just kidding, of course. All right, given that, entertain a motion to approve with conditions.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thanks very much. And don't take what I just, I just had some comments. Thank you. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thanks very much. And don't take what I just, I just had some comments. Thank you. Well, again, welcome. Glad you're doing. Look forward to having you. Uh, what do we got here? Let's see. Okay, reviews flood management program ordinances.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so, uh, this is primarily some cleanup items that outside consultants have, uh, recommended to our technical amendments to the Florida building code, which, um, are by resolution that were last updated in 2018. Um, and also some updates to our flood plain management, uh, ordinance, and also our, um, ordinance that identifies some other technical amendments to the Florida building code. Um, so a lot of it's just a cleanup of some things that outside consultants have recommended to sort of update this whole area of the code. Um, it, but if I may, what I really want to bring your attention to is a comment or a consensus that we see from the town commission last week regarding, um, definition of substantial improvement. Um, currently in the towns code, um, under technical amendments for the building code, we have a definition of substantial improvement. Um, and also there's a, a definition, and Kelly, if you go to page, uh, 19 of 29 of the PDF for, um, the flood plain management ordinance, it's also, there's a definition in the flood plain management ordinance. Um, and what substantial improvement does is, as you may know, the threshold of you have to bring your entire structure up to code. Um, so it, it's an important threshold because, uh, like, um, non-conformities, we like to think, see things brought up to code, especially in terms of, of flooding. Um, and so often what happens is someone will be doing a substantial renovation. They'll hit the 50% threshold and not only will that require them to bring the entire house up to code, it may require them to, yeah, elevate the house, which as you know, would be a very expensive endeavor and then it might be time to just demolish the house. Might be cheaper to just demolish the house and start over. So, um, I want to focus in on this because this is an issue that I know from a staff perspective, we deal with a lot. Um, and it's an issue that the commission has recommended that we look at and in terms of playing zoning board, look at this. Uh, so what I want to bring your attention to is, um, one of the changes that proposed is to change of how you determine market value. Now, this is from the outside consultants. Um, from our perspective, what I would recommend is that whenever, uh, you recommend that we take the definitions in both the technical amendments to the Florida building code and our flood plain management to make them mirror each other. So these are the proposed, um, change to this language for market value. And market value comes in when the building official asks for them to get an outside appraisal. If there's a question about what is substantial improvement and the property owner, uh, has a disagreement with the building official as to whether or not they've hit that threshold, they can get a separate appraisal. So Kelly, if you scroll down, that's the market value definition, some little tweaks to that, but if you scroll down further to, um, substantial improvement, this is the current definition of substantial improvement. And one of the things the town commission has recommended would be to include, and, and you could make the argument that it's right now included in that subsection one, um, to bring, if you had to bring it up to, this is an exception. Uh, what doesn't go into the cost of substantial improvement? Uh, a project for improvement of a building required to correct existing health, sanitary, or safe, safety code violations identified by the building official and our minimum necessary to assure safe living conditions. You could argue that that would include things like, um, installing hurricane-proof windows, doors, um, other, you know, safety protection, things like that. Um, having your roof redone with tie downs and things like that. But what the commission's recommendation, town commission recommendation was to make sure it's clear that if you do those types of renovations to really make your, uh, home more stern protection, that those don't go towards the cause of substantial, um, improvement. So that I wanted to bring that to your attention because as we're going through this ordinance, we're changing our flood plain ordinance definition of substantial improvement and the technical amendment, we could mirror these two.
Would, would elevation of a house be excluded as well?
To have to move it?
The cost of elevating, if somebody chose to elevate?
If they chose to elevate.
But you could elevate and have that excluded, which, and then not do the windows and doors and strapping on the roof, which is protecting yourself and your neighbors.
Yeah, I, I certainly, you know, it's, it's at your discretion what you want to recommend. That would be inclusive sort of in, storm protection. But that would be a, that would be a major endeavor.
Yeah, that would, that would take it.
I, I would actually add the sea wall to that list as well. Uh, modifying the sea wall because you, you want, we were talking last meeting about encouraging people to do it. You don't want it to trigger having to rebuild the entire house because those are relative, you know, relatively expensive projects.
But would a sea wall be considered part of the structure or part of the land?
Well, that's what I'm questioning, whether, would that be automatically excluded or will it be? In other words, if somebody wants to redo their sea wall, will that be part of renovating that?
I think it's just solely to the structure that you're doing the improvement on, so.
I think you raise, that's a good, that's a very good question. And I, you know, and what I'd like to do, Chrissy, with your permission, let's separate out the substantial improvement discussion.
Okay.
Let's deal with the first part and that, those are the technical changes, if you don't mind.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're gonna have a lot of discussion on the substantial improvement.
Okay.
If you don't mind. Um, so given that, if, if you all, you guys okay with that?
Sure.
Um, so let's talk about the technical things, um, the changes. Hopefully y'all have a chance to reveal them. For the most part, um.
Thank you for redlining.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, I do have a few comments. On page 26, 105.5.1. Uh, and maybe, um, this might be a typo, I don't know, but can you check the reference to 5537917A? Um, because my version of the statute does not have that to be correct.
Okay.
My version has it to be 16A. And maybe it's just, yeah, if so, just, do you need to, you know, just look at that when, this has to go to the commission for approval, so. And then the same would apply on, uh, 105.6.1. The references to 18A there too. And that might be 17A. And then 17B.
Okay.
Just, just check that because of.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And, you know, again, I could be using a different version of the, of the statute. I don't know, but, um, that's something else here. Let's see. Okay, on page 68 variances. Um, and this may not be right for this discussion, but, um, do we have a timeframe built in? I, I don't recall, even though I sat on the board adjustment, I remember. Do we have a timeframe built into the code as to when the variances, uh, have to be utilized? Is there like a one-year time period, two-year time period? Is there some time period?
I believe it's 18 months.
It's 18 months? Okay, so that's already codified. Okay, or they lose it. Okay. And that's 18 months from permitting or 18 months from approval? Okay. Finished or making an application for permit? The only reason I'm bringing all this up is because I have a case that's dealing with these types of issues. And it, it becomes, you know, quite difficult in some ways. Um, so just, we want to make sure that we're minding our Ps and Qs on that one. Uh, the relationship to the, uh, board of construction, I don't remember. Do we have a definition in our code that relates to the board of construction equals the board of adjustment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we added that in and that's actually in the ordinance.
Okay.
Um, that includes that. So it says if we don't have an appointed board of construction appeals, it becomes board of adjustment.
Okay. I don't have any comments with respect to that, other than the substantial improvement, which will go on. Any other comments? Anybody else? Any public comment with respect to this? Any staff comments?
Are you, are you allowing comments for substantial improvement now?
Not yet. Well, um, just on the technical, we're gonna separate out because that's, that's, that's a bit more complicated than what we've been doing. Okay, hearing none. Um, okay, do you want a motion on that to move forward on those technical items? Pass on to the commission? You want to hear it all at once?
If, we might as well do it piecemeal because that way if, um, there's an issue, would you want to see, come back within the draft?
Right.
We could move forward.
Okay, I agree. I think that, and I think even at the commission level, they're gonna take out the, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna do, but if I were sitting on the commission, I'd want to take that piece out.
Okay.
Just because it's gonna be, take more conversation.
Okay.
Um, anyway, so want to make a motion for what we've approved so far, other than the substantial improvement?
Right, yeah. Motion to approve what we have, what we've talked about with the exclusion of the substantial improvement.
With the clarification of your.
Clarifications, yeah.
Sure. It's moved in second. Any comments? Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so now let's talk about the substantial improvement because that is a, that is a big thing. And so I did do some research. Um, because it's, it's, it's not only here, it's happening, uh, in a lot of municipalities and I, and I'm very cognizant of what, what that, what the issues that can arise. And also I'm cognizant of the fact that it has a potential to devalue properties. It has the potential to make people not want to improve their properties. It has a negative connotation if we don't handle it properly. And so I said, okay, let me dive into this thing. And I've talked to architects, I've done everything and I don't, you know, this was kind of, and it, you know, I, I meant to, um, but there's some really good information from FEMA and, um, uh, on others about the substantial improvement rule. And I think we've gone to an extreme. The way we've been done, I've said this before at public meetings, so I think we've gone to an extreme as to what, how it's to happen. I don't know of anywhere that it mandated mandates a five-year look back. I don't see it. FEMA doesn't require it. That's up to the municipality. You can go 10-year, you can go five-year, you can do whatever. That seems to be a big issue. That, that look back period, it seems to be problematic. Why? The basic example, and it's interesting that FEMA even gives you some examples of some of this stuff. That, um, you do a renovation and then all of a sudden you, you do, you need a new roof. Now, the, the technical definition of substantial improvement says it has to be a violation in order to meet that standard. That's the technical way of looking at it. So there would have to be a violation in order to fall within that health, safety, wellness. Even though we wanted to exclude that, I don't know if we can. So we have to, we have to play with that. If it's, we just have to look at that a little bit, how we massage that. But what we can do is look at look back period. And I noticed a lot of municipalities and cities are, are scaling back that look back period because it's been a problem. Um, so for example, I think Delray has a one-year. Um, so we can set a reasonable limit that's, that's a part to it. And let me say this, um, I am in favor of redeveloping the properties and making them come up to standard. What I'm not in favor of is taking a perfectly good piece of property and then being forced into doing something that is not necessary. And the way our code is written currently, that's the situation we are in. We are, have houses, for example, that can't get fixed up. They can't even improve their kitchen because of the way we define it. So we need to look a little bit more carefully about, that's why I want to separate because this might be a two-meeting situation. Um, and, and so there's a, there's a great thing and, and I'll give this a copy. Um, and maybe you can send this around. Even in the, within the Florida building code, uh, unit eight, substantial improvements, substantial damages and the, and the differences. And, and no one really speaks of the timeframe. They say, you know, it could be whatever it is. Um, uh, so what I think we had to do is focus a large part in that timeframe. What does that make sense? Is it a year look back? Is it 18 months look back? Is it a year between permits? I, then I thought about all the little things you could do as a contractor to try to get around it because that's not what my intent is. I don't want somebody to get around it um, because they could play a game, um, with it. And that's not the intent. The intent is to do what's right and do what's good for the community and for the property owner. So, um, you know, and thinking about this, maybe we ought to have, um, a, a year from closing of a permit as opposed to a permit because you could, you could apply and then a, a year, a calendar year later, you could do it in December and then in January, come back. And I've seen this in other cases and come back and get twice as much as you, you know, it's, so I get the game. So we need to play with how we define that and whether it's from closure or permit, a one-year from closure or permit. That changes the, that changes the game, but still protects the property owner from, from doing something that's, that's good. Um, and without having to go back five years. Now think about this for a moment.
It could also be between two different property owners.
I was just gonna say that. You sell, then all of a se, and we had this here in town. I can't remember whose house it was, but we had this. The people that bought it didn't even know that there was improvements and they weren't allowed to do to make the necessary change. That was a big problem. It was, you know, it was a big issue. I don't even know what ended up happening with that, but they may have walked away. Or filed a lawsuit against the prior owner, one of the two. Um, but, so we gotta be careful of that. So, yeah, so I think that if we limit that look back period, so what I'm asking is Chrissy, please don't, you, you'll have to confirm what I'm saying. And look into.
Can you share the?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this all to her. I'll, I'll give it to her and you can look at this. Um, but there doesn't seem, and that, I think that solves 90% of our issue. And it definitely is, you know, because if you put a roof on now and then a year from now, you want to redo your kitchen, the two shouldn't have anything to do with one another. So, um, if we can accept out some of these, and, and I'm looking at it, I don't know if we can, but we could certainly make a case. Um, uh, maybe redefining it if we're allowed to, keeping in mind that this, this affects our insurance rating. So we wanna, we wanna be careful of how we do it. We want to make sure we're meeting the FEMA standard because we could lose our rating and we worked hard to get that rating. A positive rating. At least we, we did have a positive rating. We still do, right? So they can do audits.
So the town has a rating?
The town has a rating as a whole and, and, and that impacts how much we pay for flood insurance. So this stuff impacts that rating. So I don't want to, I don't want to go against that. We just have to, you know, walk the line, if you will. Um, and they have the right to audit. They can come in and audit our, what we do. And if we're not meeting that, we could lose our rating and that, that's thousands of dollars of impact on, on everybody. So we gotta be careful of that. So, um, given all that, I think I've spoken enough. Um, that's what I'd like to see us do is, is look to revise the look back, follow the definition strictly of the, of what they're, not strictly, but of what, use the definition of the FEMA standard, the NFIP, um, Florida building code. They all use the same standard. Um, and see if there's an exceptions, you know, how we can categorize certain exceptions and, and whether or not, because it's not really a violation not to have a hurricane window. It's smart to do and to encourage it, but it's not a. It's smart to do and to encourage it, but it's not a violation of our code.
Why, why do we need the date July 2017? Is that when, what happened? That was when this code first was adopted?
Probably. Where are you? Oh, you're looking at this.
Substantial improvement. Period of accumulation begins when the first improvement period-
2017 was the last time that ordinance was, well, updated. It was also updated in 2019, but that probably was where that date came down.
We don't need that either, it's just, it's a, it's a rolling one-year lookback.
We can make that a rolling one-year lookback.
I do have a question about market value. That's a moving target as well, isn't it? Is it market value five years ago, or market value?
It's current market value.
When you're applying for your permit?
When you apply for your permit. That, that is defined in there.
That is.
That is in FEMA. It's as of the day of the permit, prior to construction. I did see that.
So that might work your favor or against you, if it's a five-year period, right? It's a, what you paid for a renovation five years ago might be way, way below.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
What it's worth.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a difficult thing to manage. I think, I think it's very hard on the staff, quite frankly. They have to go back, and they have to deal with it, and guess what, they're going to, they're going to hear arguments from the property owner, that's for sure. I know that's happening. It's just a mess. And I think we, I think, in looking back, I think we just took too strict of an approach. I don't know if they took the time at that time, this was years ago, whether they took the time to analyze and say, what does it say? Sometimes you got to look to see, what does it read? What does it say? And then act accordingly. I think, I think they just took what, I don't know what they did. I can't explain it, but so, given that-
I think part of the analysis that went on back then, and this is just my understanding of, of some of the things in the code and how it's progressed that I've looked at, was trying to look forward and looking at floodplain management, and trying to make sure that obviously some of the houses that are lower level with newer development, if you create that longer year of a lookback, then it forces more people that when you're doing a major renovation, to go ahead and bring your, your house up to current flood standards. So that we wouldn't have this inequity that we're currently seeing in town, where the newer construction is so much higher than the existing. Trying to bring everybody up so that, you know, then we can start improving roadways, so the roadways are higher, because one of the problems that we're facing with the roadways is that if you have some houses where the elevations are inconsistent, you can't really bring up the roadway, because now you're going to create a flooding issue for the lower levels. So that's a way to try to get these non-conforming properties to come into current conditions. But as you pointed out, yeah, it creates a hardship for that property owner in some regards.
Aren't the insurance companies going to do that for us? They're going to, you're going to be uninsurable at some point.
And that, and funny that you brought that up. This happened to somebody not too long ago, where the insurance company said that they had to raise their house in order to get insurance, and no one would cover them. So, yeah, I, I think we're going to, we, we might over time, but that doesn't happen, that's not throughout town. There, there's really not that many properties anymore. I, I mean, there's been a lot of redevelopment. So at what point, there's a balancing act here. And I don't know, and I agree, I see the, I see the the merit possibly in that concept, but at the same time, there's an, there's an onerous aspect of that. And I think that's what you have to balance out. And so we have to be realistic on what we do. And I'm a firm believer in encouraging redevelopment as opposed to discouraging. And so the worst thing you can have is a house that does nothing. What's the cost of that? So now we have a house that gets dilapidated or, or down, and we're just waiting for somebody to come along and redevelop it, and then we're arguing with, with that. So there's always something that's going to happen. So what makes sense? What's reasonable? So what's interesting is that an exception to the standard is a historical structure. Now, why, why is that so important? Right? I mean, think about it. So it's so important. It's, it's how we deem it. If it's on a register, it's however-
Are there any in town?
In our town. Now you more, the last one got torn down. The one, remember the one McKinney tore down, right? That was a historic structure that, that got ripped down over everybody's shot.
That was a great old house.
That was a great old house. It probably, it probably would have fallen down. But at, at any rate, so there's, you know, there's some, there's, looking at the code even, there's some, you know, some questionable things, so I think if we find that balance, and so maybe today is not the time to ultimately decide, but to look into and come back at the next meeting and say, yeah, we can do this, this, and this within the confines of this. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Do we have direction, do you guys agree with me on the lookback, modify that, take it off the five-year plan? I think that's just, that's just a mess.
We can do some-
And everybody's finding that to be a mess. It's just not us. Anybody that employed that, some have 10, that's been a nightmare for people. So we're just not into that. We don't need that. It's just not necessary, I don't think.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at it and do some further research and come back with some-
And I'll give you this stuff.
Yeah, you can chat out with us.
Include, including a backup.
Fun reading. That's all I have with that. Any other comments? Any public comment? Mr. Brown?
Take me a second to get there.
That's okay, take your time.
Jerry Brown, over at STUP. There's lots of things that go into this, like, do you need a new septic tank? You're an old house, you need a new septic tank? Does that cost add on to improvement? I mean, it's a, a, a public health issue. And it's permitted by the state, not by the town. So is, is that something that you need to look at? You get a, you get a leaky roof, you put a roof on, that's, that adds to the, to the calculator-
Yeah.
With the clock going. I, I just, the other thing that's not clear, to some of the people in my neighborhood, although I'm not their interpreter, but the county has been looking at the value of the structure, whereas before, they looked at the total market value of the property, assuming someone is going to flip it out, or whatever they're going to do. But now I've noticed that the structure has been increased. Have you noticed that? Yeah. So how does, how does someone apply this calculation? Do you apply it on the market value of the property, or just the structure?
By definition, it's on the structure.
I know, that's, that's the way I saw it, and that's what I tell people, but-
And that makes it even more difficult.
I know, because the structured value is so low.
Right.
When you start calculating, you're way over.
Like your house, you have an older home.
Yeah.
And you can't do anything. You'd, you'd be in here screaming at us.
Except when it almost turned down, the insurance company came in and did something. But, no, those are, those are the types of things that I think needs to be clear. And, and this guy Webb from the county said that each municipality will have some flexibility. I don't know what he meant.
Well, this is the stuff I was talking about. We do have flexibility, as long as it fits within, the only, the only, our, our only confinement is the definition. How we deal with the other aspects, the lookback, the other things, is up to the municipality. We could do whatever we want with respect to that, and that's where we, I think there's some liberal interpretation. I think you're making a very good point about the septics.
Yeah.
That's not part of the-
Because they're super expensive now.
Right.
I mean, they-
You know, and I think we want to encourage this and the seawall, that those are the two most important things in town, in my view, that we should encourage fixing and re-
Well, if you're near an intercoastal, and you have a bad septic tank, I mean, you, you're talking big money.
Well, I mean, if it, if it's, it's, it's big money, but it's not so big money. I mean, it's, it's doable.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's over a long period of time that you do it. The, the trouble is, there's some older homes here that did nothing with their septic systems for 40 years, and then wonder why there's an issue, right? They don't maintain it. I mean, I don't know about you, I, I have mine maintained every year. I do the things that you're supposed to do, and it's fine. It's a working system, and I've been here 36 years, 34 years. So it's, but I think you raise a point, I think we had to look at that, though.
How those costs are calculated is, I think it's a big thing.
Yeah.
And, and your idea of eliminating the five years is, I mean, you can accumulate a lot of costs and never be able to do anything else.
Right.
So I think, and, and the other issue is that the substantial improvement applies to all properties, floodplain or not. And that, that's a big issue. In fact, Webb, or someone said that the entire county is now considered a floodplain.
State of Florida-
No matter where you are, and how high you are.
The state of Florida's a floodplain. As of last week, the state of Florida-
If the bank's going to make people buy flood insurance, whether they're 20 feet up or not, what do we, what do we do with multifamily?
As far as-
You're applying for a permit?
Well, that's a completely different test.
Yeah.
I mean, they, yeah, that's-
You're applying for your permit, you're the end unit of a, you know, row townhouses.
No, that's, that's a completely different.
So it's not a-
It, it is applicable, but that's a completely different standard.
Anyway, thank you for the opportunity. The roofing and so on is usually a common decision. On these kind of situations.
With the, with the new condo laws that are coming down, I think some of them incorporate-
Three stories, I saw that.
Incorporate that in here, so all bets are off now. I, I have, you know, this is going to be a mess for a while.
Good for the engineers.
It's good. I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's going to be tough. Okay. Any other questions on that? Yep, you good? You need a consensus motion or anything? No? Good. Okay. You guys have any comments? Corey, you guys, you have any comments on what we're talking about? Do you agree, disagree?
I'm just in force what you-
Oh, I know, but, I know, but you could say, listen, guys, what are you doing? Okay. All right, where are we on the agenda here? Seawall.
Seawall.
We did the clean, oh, cleanup, oh, seawall in this, okay.
So as you may recall, we discussed the seawall issue previously in this is my attempt, and it may be an oversimplification, but I think it would, you know, continue that conversation that we are having about the seawall. And what the court did was to include the existing section 6477, which is the existing section on docks, which I did not change, because your dock height, in some respects, is, you know, mandated by what your seawall height is. So what I did was I created a new section that's just specific to seawall. And I plagiarized a lot from the Fort Lauderdale ordinance, but I did not get into the detail that the Fort Lauderdale ordinance did. Instead, just set the minimum mandatory for the seawall. And that's in the draft ordinance, which you can see, that's on the screen right now, where everything is underlined. So this would be a whole new section in our code, specific to seawall height. It just sets a mandatory minimum, obviously not a maximum. I highlighted a couple of sections, because we can always say a commencement date, which doesn't necessarily have to be the date, obviously, that the ordinance would be adopted. It could be a look forward if that was the desire of this commission, and obviously the town commission. And then also, one of the other things that we discussed was a way to sort of incentivize or encourage folks to, who are right now, looking at, well, I, I got a renewed seawall, so should I go ahead and, you know, increase it to the mandatory minimum height now? And, and this may be, this is just a thought on giving them sort of administrative variance to allow them to project a little bit further into waterway, if that is permissible by other agencies that would control, you know, that type of projection. Because right now, as you can see from the section that's included in 6477, we only allow a five-foot projection into the waterway for your docks. So that was one thought on how to incentivize people. If, say, say if we set the commencement date January 27, just by way of example, this would be a way to encourage people now, before the commencement date, to go ahead and let's start seeing our seawalls at the minimum mandatory.
Mr. Chairman, I have some.
Your question.
My understanding is the Army Corps of Engineer allows you to build new seawalls now, extending 18 inches beyond the property line to kind of simplify the construction and allow you, instead of having to demolish what you have, allows you to build a new seawall right in front of it. 6482D says that should be installed on the property line. So I think that might be an issue we should look at. The other thing is the variances of 25% is also, all depends on how you, you figure it, right? That 18 inches, 25% of five feet is less than 18 inches, so if the Corps of Engineers is allowing you to do that, then we have to take that into consideration, those extra 18 inches to two feet in terms of our variances for the docks and floating docks and all the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, that's, the Army Corps is allowing you to put it right in front of the current seawall. The issue with some is the batter pilings that are already in there.
Those, those you have to take out.
Batter pilings.
Yeah, they're limiting it.
But if you're putting in a new seawall anyway, so that kind of comply, so we just have to tweak whatever this says to go along with the Army Corps, without giving the Army Corps the carte blanche. We, we've gone that route too, and that doesn't work. Because then the town has no control.
Right, absolutely.
So it's, it's a balance there that-
Right. I, I just think that from a, if you truly want to encourage the cost of demolishing, and the noise, and the disruption to the property, having to demolish the existing wall, to build another wall, versus now, there are technologies of these PVC piling sheets that can be driven in front of it. You take the batter piles out, you drive them in, minimal disruption to the, to the existing properties and to the ones around it. I think that's why the Corps of Engineers is allowing it, and I think we should incorporate that into whatever we do.
I, we have to be careful then on some of the narrow canals, some of them, that, you know, you take 18 inches on either side, and then you have a five-foot dock with a, with a bonus space suddenly, and then a lift in front of that.
It, it does say to not, to not interfere with the, with the navigation, so that should absolutely be a factor there, but, um.
The so that, and that, the other thing is that you, you might be able to put a cap on to raise the top level, as opposed to building a new seawall. It might be as, as easy as putting a cap on it to raise it up, the, just the cap size, as opposed to building a whole new seawall.
It depends on the, the, the current condition of the seawall. In some cases, I've seen it around where they just come in and just pour another two feet on top of it, and call it a day, and move on. Some cases.
When your side canals, the, the, typically, the seawall itself structure is probably still okay. Because there's no action, there's not a lot of wave action, there's not a lot of stuff going on. So you can get, get by with putting a cap on. Maybe not so much along Island Drive, because there's a lot of wave action there, I don't know.
I know, I know for us over here, the problem is that our seawall, there's a lot of very loose soil, and then rock. So the seawalls are doing this. They're literally, the, the footings are moving out. So it depends where you are, and I think in most cases, if the homeowner can get away with just pouring another two feet of concrete on top of it, believe me, they'll do that, because the cost is astronomical.
What is it? What is it a foot for seawall today?
Depends, anywhere from $800 to $1,200.
I was going to say $1,000, so that's the, that's the typical, when people are using today, is $1,000 a square foot.
Could be a lot less than that if you're just pouring a cap on top of an existing one, but-
Yeah. This is, this is, this is going to be a huge issue. As time goes on, it's going to be an issue. And some of these seawalls weren't, like you said, they're pushing out, they're bowing out at the bottom, because they weren't dug deep enough. So where, some of the homes are facing that, so that, those are variances that, that occur throughout. There, there was no then, yeah, then you have the ridge, you have sable that has a ridge. I mean, the, you know, yeah, so you have different factors there that support those seawalls. That's hard rock.
Right, yeah.
And on the south and wort, wort areas, I think you have, is that muck down there? What do you have down there?
Yeah, well, west of me, we're the last house on the ridge.
Okay.
On a limestone ridge there, but the rest of it's all been filled in.
It's all filled.
When everybody did the property back in the 50s. When everybody did the property back in the 50s.
Yeah.
On both Harvard Drive north and south, and you could see the, the road sinking.
Yeah. No, and, you know, there's, yeah.
Just we have our little friend also.
I think there's a, there's, this was a good attempt to, you know, give us some, some opportunity to think about it and to move forward with it. Um, I mean, me, if, if five feet is, is the number, I'm okay with that, and I'm okay with encouraging the town to say, listen, you know, do at least five feet. I think there's some seven foot. What was recently approved? Didn't you do a seven-foot one recently? Anybody do seven feet?
Like high?
Yeah. How about, um, what's the, what's the Ocean Club, the Mazanets there? What are, what are they? They five feet?
That's on the other side. This says not for Atlantic. Yeah, on the beach side, it's way higher.
No, no. I'm talking Mazanets, the one that's on the intercoast, that's on...
The project.
Off of A1A.
Yeah.
Did anybody know what that height was? How about, how about the Weinbergs over on Sable? I should know that, but I don't. Well, they all put, those are the two most recent new ones. I'm only bringing this up so you can see, get the idea of what five feet looks like or seven feet, whatever they did. This way you can get a feel for it. So ironically enough, when they did the ones at the Mazanets, um, a few years back towards the tennis courts, that property owner, it used to be Senator Thompson's house, they redid their seawall, uh, several years ago. Well, when the rest of the Mazanets did it, now they went back and redid that again to, to match up.
Yeah.
Um, and so there's...
Could, could you distribute some addresses of, of five, where, where five feet is so we can go look at it? Is that possible?
I'd have to do some research because I don't know. Who's got what?
Yeah, I don't...
Well, just those, just look at those properties I just mentioned, and that's, those are the most recent. Um...
I know there's a home on Inlet K.
Would you, what, what was, uh, who else's Inlet K?
Yeah. That was, it's, it's basically five above NAVD.
Is it five? Does that seem, you're the engineer in the family.
Yeah.
What's the deal? Is five feet, is...
Five feet is great, um, except, like I said last time, it's, it'll change everything when it comes to docks and all the structures to go with it. And, you know, you can't, um...
Well, the dock is, is also a product, not only of the seawall height, but a product of the water level. Because you want to be able to get in and on and off your boat. So you could have the seawall high, higher, and the dock be three feet.
Right, but for most, you need a ramp at that point, and it changes.
Whatever.
Well, it's for the shorter waterfrontage, it's a problem.
Yeah.
Right?
You don't need to have a ramp. I mean, that's a choice. You have a step down.
Right. Yeah, it's, I mean...
Usually stairs to get down.
Right.
Because the, um, like pool deck or whatever's there is usually like nine. So this, the one that we just looked at, 6726, theirs is gonna be at six, the seawall and dock.
Okay.
And then, so then it goes up to like, yeah, nine and a half, nine for the pool deck.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Have that little step down to get down.
So it seems like somewhere between five and seven seems to be the, the ticket.
We're not putting a maximum on it.
Right.
Just for that reason.
Right. So at a minimum, so at a minimum, where does that five foot stand? That's, that's the issue. Is that five foot enough to get us for how long?
Well, I mean, if you think about the tide...
I guess I'm too casual.
Tides and, um, the king tide, we get at like three, right? And if we have a storm with it, it'll get higher. But we li, did research on, you know, municipalities around this area, and five was the, pretty much the standard.
Okay.
They were doing.
All right. I'm okay with that.
But I, I agree. I, um, we need to think about the extension and not make people just demolish the seawall that's there because it's not realistic or constructable or it's gonna cost...
Also gives support to the existing seawall.
Yes, exactly.
So it makes it stronger even better.
Yeah.
I didn't write this, but we do, I think we do need to allow that.
Okay.
And then, but then, then your dock would be five feet from that, so...
So the, the five-foot dock, is that, just for clarification, because I know this was an issue before, where does that extension occur from? Is it from the cap? Is it from the back, back of the cap? The front of the cap? Where is that five foot?
If you read the code and you think like, it's kind of making an assumption that the seawall is at the property line, then that, that dock is five feet, can extend five feet.
So it's five feet from the property line?
From the, well, the seawall, which you're assuming the seawall's at the property line.
Okay. Where on the seawall, though? Is it on the, on the front edge of the seawall or the back edge of the seawall?
This is the original seawall.
Right, so I mean, but this is, this is a real issue.
No, yeah.
I know, I know our last inspector was taking a very hard approach.
Yes.
That caused a lot of problems. I just want to make sure, did we clarify that?
Not in this code. That's not clarified, so...
So there's a point that we need to clarify. Where does that five feet come from? Halfway between the, maybe halfway on the cap or something? I don't know, whatever you want to do.
If I may.
You may.
On the definition, uh, when you look at, uh, with a measurement of five feet, it says five feet from the seawall or the bulkhead. And in the reading term, bulkhead is another term for a cap. So normally we, caps are like three feet, one for the end, one for the middle, and one that sticks out. And that's where we've usually gone, is right from the outside. So technically, I guess you can probably get another foot to two feet, so it's anywhere from five to seven feet from the face of the sea, uh, of the cap going towards the water.
The wet face. Call it the wet face.
The wet side.
Right.
So to avoid that jerk that comes along and decides to have a five-foot cap, I think we need to say, well, I think...
From the wet face?
From some definition as to, uh, I mean, most caps are what, three feet?
Three feet.
Yeah. So maximum cap, three feet. I mean, they can have a bigger cap if, if it meets it, whatever, but the calculation for extension should come from some point in time with the, you know, variance of the three feet cap.
Yeah, or just give a maximum. Uh, so we're going with just maximum seven feet instead of five feet.
Right.
Period.
I agree, I agree with that. I think that...
From the dry side of the seawall?
No, the wet side.
Wet side of the seawall.
Because that gives you, because you, from, for, for some cases, you're gonna need to go to a flooring dock, again, because of the height situation. And that has to stay, call it a foot or so, they have to drop some piling and all that. So I think that's a more realistic number of going off the wet face and then the seawall itself allow for what the Army Corps of Engineers is doing, which is the extra 18 inches off your product.
Okay.
I was so good at this.
You were, you were pretty good. I was surprised, but you sounded great, so don't worry about it.
You're distracted.
Um, this is a good discussion. Any other comments? I mean, there's, so there is, there's more to it than, so this is great, Kristy. Thank you for, uh...
I, I have one more.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and the, the 6477, if you look at D, so the height of the dock shall not exceed five feet above the mean water, low water.
We don't have that in front of us, but go ahead.
The cap, um, it's in the back of.
Oh, it's here. Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be kind of a new point. It would be that's five.
I, I think. From the mean low water or the cap to the seawall or bulkhead to which such dock abuts, if any, whichever is higher, and no super chubby. All right, so maybe we just have to look at that definition a little bit, fine tune that.
Because it said, we're going five, then it wouldn't really, that part.
Yeah, I agree. I think if we are setting a minimum, that's the reference point. So going to, to mean low level, which you have to convert to NAVD and all that, and, um, just go from...
Depends on who you ask what the mean low level is.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah, that would need to be...
See, I did it this time. Just keep it on and don't worry. Don't think about it. Okay, any other comments? Any other comments you want us to address at this point, Kristy?
No, what we can do is we can make some of these tweaks to, to this, um, and, and bring it back, and then hopefully by then we have the opportunity to fit some of the seawalls in town and, and so we can bring it back to the next meeting for the discussion.
Um, there, there was a, a restriction. I saw the size of the cap could only be 18 inches or somewhere. I read in the, there was a limit to how big the cap could be. But if your neighbor was putting in a new compliant seawall, there should be some, you know, you don't want to be the low spot on the run because the water's gonna seek that spot. We have to give some relief to, to meet up with your neighbor's new height.
Yeah, they usually go...
Go, have a, do a return.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, you, you try to, we try to talk to our neighbors about, hey, that's all. Everybody dances a different rhythm, you know?
Go down Island Drive and you'll see the different rhythm.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a, that's a, that's a big point for potential breach is right there.
Right. And, and I said that last time, it's like an arms race. If I raise my seawall, all that water that was coming over my wall is gonna go over to your wall. So it's gonna get worse as the process, as more and more walls raise, the two or three that aren't on a, on an inlet, it's gonna, they're, they're gonna be incentivized heavily by Mother Nature.
What's even worse is, uh, Hurricane Sandy, when it came through in Manalapan, when the zip, you know, the, the, what happens, they, one seawall goes down, and it's like a zipper. And even though they might have had a good seawall, it, it, the, the, that seawall breaks and all the rest of them go crashing down. And that's what happened in Manalapan. You know, one broke and it caused like a zipper effect, and a bunch of seawalls along the, on the ocean got wiped out. Um, so there is an impact that, you know, what your neighbor does and, or doesn't do.
We also mentioned last time about some other incentives like, uh, you know, lower permitting fees or something like that. You mentioned that, Ken. I don't know if that's still in discussion or not.
Can we, you know, I, I notice you, you put this as an incentive. You get us to start thinking about it. What, what are types of things that we can possibly look at, you know, just to make it something easier? That's what happened. When that occurred, um, you know, the state cut all the permitting, they, you know, fast-tracked everything, they, you know, they put a period of time, if you did it within a year, certain, you got certain benefits.
Post hurricane.
Post hurricane, yes, because they wanted to make sure people redid their hurry, their, their seawalls. Well, using that concept, can, could we do that to encourage?
Maybe up for a period of time, you know?
Yeah, could be. You could do a five-year period or something that's...
It, it, it's, it's always within your purview to recommend like a waiver of fees or a reduction of fees. Um, what I try to do is not impact the fee structure, um, because, you know, there's controls now, statutory controls on our, uh, building permit fee structure. And so they have to keep, uh, tight reins on that in terms of how much can be rolled over year to year and things like that. So try not to impact that, but that's certainly something that's within your purview if, um, you want to give encouragement through some type of fee waiver. Um, other communities, you know, do some type of other incentive. Um, you know, one of the things we talked about earlier in, uh, the prior discussion dealing with the floodplain management ordinance, uh, was, uh, if you did the seawall, was there some kind of benefit to that? So, um, you could look at other things. Does that, do you take that away from, um, somewhere else, you know? Those are the types of things you just, you have to think about.
So maybe more structural as opposed to messing with the, I mean, that we could think of some, some things that, um, I don't know, some, some variance to what they're allowed to do and, you know, maybe they can build their pool and with four feet of it instead of five feet, or I don't know, whatever. But structural, you, so you said maybe it's more, like you did with the docks, more structural as opposed to, um, you know, more of an administrative variance towards, uh, something as opposed to dealing with the fees.
All right, so we'll bring that back with some tweaks and have a good discussion.
Great. Good. That was very helpful, guys. Thank you.
But in, I'm sorry, in, in general, the five feet, the, the, the commission has agreed on the five feet is a reasonable number to, as far as the minimum is concerned, right?
I'd like to see a five-foot one.
I, I think if you go down to, to the Mazanetts right off of A1A there, I think that's five feet.
Yeah.
It seems like it is.
And six Inlet K also, I think it's, just go in a high tide, as we talked about last time.
Yeah.
It won't seem so high.
No, because you're telling me about your, your, your jet drive getting...
Yeah.
I'd, I'd offer to pick you up and take you around and show you, but, but we get in trouble. Anyway, um, okay, next on the agenda is the hedges.
So our, as you may recall, we did have a discussion previously about landscaping outside of, um, the walls and fences that are visual from the right of way. Uh, but this is also the same, um, section of the code 64-44 that deals with the hedges, and we had an issue with, uh, hedges recently in town. So, uh, what I did here was I made some tweaks, uh, to 6444 to address both issues. Um, first, obviously, is to clean up the, the hedge issue, um, and make it clear that, except as otherwise a lot of the code, because there are some areas where obviously side triangles and things like that, where the height of the hedge does matter. Um, but beyond that, that there will be no, you know, maximum height for hedges. So that's just clearly stated.
Have you seen how tall some of those hedges are in Palm Beach? I don't know how they could ever cut them. I mean, if we have an unlimited hedge height, it'll, it'll get unruly because you...
Well, as I was talking, we were talking earlier, they turn into trees if they're, if it's not done right.
Right.
Um, I, I think, you know, with, just to clean this up now, recommendation, I, I would go along with it, but I do agree. I think even though 25 years ago, when I was dealing with this the first time around, um, you know, it was different circumstances, but I can, in, in thinking about this, I can see where, um, a lot can be ensconced with two giant hedges on both sides and feel like they're entrapped. Um, because if they're 16 to 20 feet high, I mean, that's, that's, that's overwhelming.
And shallow. You can't grow grass, and you have to go to fake turf.
Yeah, and then it kind of blocks the sun. There's all sorts of things that start to arise. So, but once you go down this path, no pun intended, um, it's just, it's just really, really difficult to, to maintain. So a little background, I think I said this last time, the reason why there wasn't a hedge restriction is because, um, and that's probably, right, both prior to your time, we had Australian pine hedges. Um, and those Australian pine hedges were huge. And, uh, the Ocean Club was infamous for having a giant, um, because they covered the tennis courts. Instead of having wind screens, there would be these giant Australian, uh, hedges that were that tall. So it was 20 feet, I guess, whatever they were, they were huge. And that wasn't uncommon. There were some other places that had, um, Australian pine. Now, ever since we did away with Australian pines, those started to go away, and then you have the other stuff that's coming back in.
Pollution.
Pollution's big now. Um, but, uh, and you know, with Mountnecks House, you know, he, there's a reason why the hedges, I was telling, there's a reason why the hedge is behind the wall because we wouldn't let him build a higher wall. So he said, fine, you can have the hedge, but it looks really good, right? Doesn't it? I mean, I think, as opposed to having a bigger wall. Um, so it's a, it's a balancing act, and, and you, and you try to hope that people become reasonable, but sometimes unfortunately, that's not always the case. So my view is we'll, we'll pass this, you know, we should pass this now just so that the staff doesn't get into any more issues. It clarifies it, but if we want to revisit it and say, does this make sense? Are there other municipalities that have sidewall, side hedge heights or front, you know, I don't know, but we should, it's probably worth an examination. But we should, it's probably worth an examination, but not today. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Given that, is there a motion to approve the recommendations set forth in this resolution? What is it?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. There isn't a number, but the ordinance pertaining to hedges?
Commed.
Second? With a second A discussion, any public comment? Don't all, don't, no. All in favor of seeing that by saying aye? All opposed like sign the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of required comp plan updates.
Mr. Chairman, Corey Norman, Town Planner. This, this is just an introductory item. This is just an introductory item. Thank you. There's no action requested at this meeting. I have hard copies of the draft amendment to the comprehensive plan for you that I'll hand out in just a moment. I'm also joined this morning by Jim Pleishman from Land Research Management. Morning. Jim and I have been working together along with town staff to prepare some amendments to the comprehensive plan. And as some of you may know, the Florida statutes require that municipalities and counties amend their plans every seven years. And this board, Planning and Zoning Board, is the local planning agency for the town of Ocean Ridge. So you will have a key role in review of the plan. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to, I'm going to hand out the hard copies and I'd like to have Jim give you a little overview of what we've done so far. We'd like for you to review through the plan in preparation for your next month's meeting where we'll talk about the, the actual content and some of the changes. But Jim, you want to, you want to just give a little overview while I'm distributing the plans?
I sure do. Well, there is a, thank you, a very formal process that we have to go through for board statutes. Corey mentioned that this has to be done once every seven, seven years. It's time for that to turn in. We started out the process by writing the state of letter outlining what we intended to look at in this effort. And they got back to us saying, saying that what, what we proposed to do meets the, meets the statutory requirements. So go ahead and do it. The, one of the principal things that we had, that we had to do, that was a new item in the plans now, is that there has to be ten and twenty-year planning periods. So we had to prepare population projections for twenty thirty-five and twenty forty-five. By, by the statutes, those projections have to be prepared by, by a professionally recognized individual firm or, or source. So we felt the simplest way to do that is, is to take the population projections that that are prepared periodically by Palm Beach County Planning Division. They may not only prepare population projections for, for the county itself, but, but they take those projections from the county and distribute them appropriately to each jurisdiction. So, so we decided to go ahead and use those, those projections. One of the reasons that, that we decided to, to use those as opposed to, to the previous effort, which, which was proposed prepared by the University of Florida, is that, that the projections prepared by Palm Beach County are, are used in all of the local planning programs that Palm Beach County is involved in. And they're also used by the city of Boynton Beach in, in the preparation of this tenured water supply facilities plan. And as you know, Boynton Beach provides water to the town. So by using the county's projections rather than the state's, we feel that we are better integrated into local planning outlets. The, the document that, that you have is essentially, we started out with the current comprehensive plan and then we went through it essentially page by page, element by element. And, and made, and made revisions to update population projections, update certain issues that, that were, that have been identified in the four staff meetings that, that we have had to, to this point. Updated some of the language in the plan. I don't believe that we identified any new major issues that we feel the town needs, needs to address that weren't currently addressed in the plan. So, so it's, it's essentially a cleanup. Updating tables, map, text to, to bring everything more current. And it's in an underlined and striked through format with all of the changes highlighted in yellow. One, one of the things that we wanted to, to, to ask is when we bring it back for, for a more detailed discussion of, of the changes, would you like to see a clean copy? The copy that you have now can, can be somewhat difficult to go through because of all of the strikethroughs and underlines. I think it's, I think it's imperative that you see those, but you may want to see what the plan will look like if all of those changes are made in addition to the ones that you have.
Yeah. Uh-oh. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, in my and Kristy's worlds, and maybe your worlds too, we were used to having red lines and it's always helpful to have the clean copy and sit next to the red line in case you want to reference it. So now, I guess if you, if you want to save on publication costs, you could, you could print out the red line and make the, the clean copy available on a, on a, you know, zip drive or something so we don't sit there. Is that, would you like the hard copy of the clean and a hard copy of the red line?
Just the red.
Just the red, yeah. Me too. Okay. And if you want a clean, I would just ask, just get us a clean, but maybe have it available via electronically.
I'll, I'll go through it. I'll go through it. I have gone through it to see the level of markup.
Well, there are certain elements that have very few changes and there are other elements that have substantial changes. So it's hard to just make a blanket statement.
Are you going to prepare a memo in advance to say what kind of, where, I think it's helpful to know what choices we have to make. Where, where are the deciding, you know, where's, where's the decision from our end? These are things, well, you can't really do anything about. And these are things where you have to make a decision on. Those are the things I'd like to see, maybe an advanced memo, just outlining it and say, okay, this is the things you can touch. These are the things you can't touch. I think that helps. And it also speeds up the process. The other thing is do, and I, I don't remember, don't, don't we have to have this at an evening meeting as well? Don't we have to have one evening meeting?
It has to be advertised.
Has to be, so do, do we have to have any extra meetings, Kristy, on this? No, it's just normal.
But when it goes to the commission, it's obviously two meetings because it's comp plan amendment, so it's by ordinance. So those are the public hearings.
Okay, so it doesn't.
And you as the LPA would also have it as a public hearing, but.
Okay, there's no requirement. And no charrettes needed or anything like that? No, no public workshop?
I think that's within your discretion.
Okay.
It's not required, but yeah, if you wanted to do something like that.
Yeah.
On, on the staff level, what we wanted to be sure to do is bring it to you in advance of, of a hearing so that you had it with plenty of time to review. And, and then at your discretion, we can, we can have additional meetings if need be. If you find that, say, next meeting in November is sufficient, that you're ready to forward it on to the town commission, we can certainly do that. It's, it's certainly up to your discretion.
So I, I think if we have that memo in advance and so we know what we're, what we're keying in on. I mean, this is probably my fourth or fifth comp plan thing. So so there's not a lot of changes that take place because the town doesn't change all that much. But there are certain things that we probably have to address that might need a little bit more discussion.
And as Jim mentioned, a lot of it is early cleanup and bringing it up to date where, you know, the language talked about the MPO and the MPO doesn't exist anymore. So, I mean, they, they just changed title. So a lot of it is just, just reflecting those changes that have occurred and Jim, I think you mentioned that, that you think the, the population projections that were in there were for like two thousand, they had, or two thousand and ten. So they hadn't been updated.
Right, so.
It's, it really is a lot of cleanup. But we'll, we'll be sure to provide a, a breakdown of those things in a memo so it's very clear what the changes are. And if there are things that, that there's discretion in, we'll certainly identify what they are.
Great. So then you don't find that to be difficult to do, right? I mean, I don't want to impose more work than need be.
Well, there, there really isn't, with the exception of, of the population projections themselves and the, the policies that are directly related to the population projections like the infrastructure, water and sewer demands, things like that, traffic. Those things are, are pretty much fixed. Most of the text in the plan is, is something that you can make comments on and, and make recommendations for, for change. And also, when we notified the state, we also, one of the work items that we had in there was that if any other items came up during the process that, that we did not highlight in this, in this first scope letter, we have the ability to address those as well. In, in going through this, if, if there's something that you think that we missed or, or an issue that should be addressed that's not in there, you definitely have, have the authority to still do that at this point. And, and I think, I think in my mind, rather than us saying yes, no, yes, no, yes, no throughout the document, I personally would like to see you, you focus your efforts on, did we cover everything in there that you think should be?
So here's the, here's the danger part of that, right? And that sounds good. But that implies that we have knowledge of what not, what's not in there. You follow me? So it, it does, we are relying upon the staff to tell us what may or may not, or should be considered to be in there. Right? So I hear what you're saying, but it's assuming that we have enough knowledge to say, oh, we should put that in the comp plan amendment. We may not have that knowledge. So what's helpful is, because you guys are the professionals, to tell us, okay, this is not in there now. Maybe you ought to consider this. I think that's, that would be helpful.
Well, I think that we've, we've, like I said, I said, we've had four meetings with, with the staff and a couple of the meetings were, were attended by, by consultants also. So, so I think at this point is, from, from our perspective, I think that we have covered everything that we need to.
That's what we need to hear. Right there. Bingo. So you're making, you know, that's what, at least that's what I want to hear. I want to hear, yes, we covered everything that you needed, that needed to be covered.
I think that's, that's very helpful.
So, Mr. Chair, to that point, one thing I want to mention is, in thinking about your comprehensive plan, a lot of different cities do a lot of different things in their comprehensive plan that aren't required to be in your comprehensive plan, but they put it there because they want to give it sort of a, a higher level of requirement. Because as you know, with your comprehensive plan, that's really your charter or your bible that sets the, the general parameters for everything to flow down from. So your land development code, our land development code, which was where we live, that's where, that's what implements your comprehensive plan. So what you put your comprehensive plan is sort of, you know, what's going to mandate everything. So like if you look on page one dash five, in the town's comprehensive plan, you have density, maximum density requirements or limitations. So in policy six point two, which it, it was in policy six point three, it's just now a separate policy. It sets for single-family, a maximum density of three dwelling units per acre, multifamily. So some cities don't have density. They leave that up to the individual zoning districts in your land development code. That's where your density is. But if you put it in your comprehensive plan, then all of your land development code have to live up to this mandatory. Otherwise, you have an inconsistency between your comprehensive plan and your land development code.
Would, would this change, would this density that you've just highlighted in one point five make any of our existing multifamily non-compliant?
This has been in there because, so what they did is they took policy six point three, which is now policy six point one. You see it struck out above and now it's down below. So this has been in the current comprehensive plan. If we have anything that's non-conforming, it would have had to been built
Prior.
Prior to the last time we updated the comprehensive plan. So what I want to mention is that some cities, what their focus is for development and how they want to give it a little bit more importance, they will stick things in their comprehensive plan that technically don't have to be there. And so density at some point became an issue maybe that the town was concerned about. So they put density in it. I know Juno Beach used to have an issue with non-conformities. And so they put a section on non-conformities in their comprehensive plan. So I think one thing that they're mentioning is to also think about things that are really important to the town while not required to be in your comprehensive plan. If you put it in your comprehensive plan, it gives it a little bit more importance than just if it's an ordinance. Because also you have to keep in mind, going through a process to change your comprehensive plan is, especially if it's a large-scale change, a text amendment like this, it's a bit of a more process than if it's just a regular, you know, land development code text change. So that's something I think that, you know, they've met all the basic requirements and keeping the text as it has been in the past. But I think that's one thing that it would be kind of impossible to point out all the things that you could put in your plan. But for you to think about things based on your experience living in town, that you may think we need to put a higher importance on in our comprehensive plan to make sure that all development adheres to that. So that's just thought to think about when you're going through this.
So that's a good point, very good point. So it might be helpful, I hate to do this to everybody, but in, in, as opposed to getting lost into a regular P and Z meeting that we have a lot of other things on it, that we maybe schedule an LPA meeting, separate and apart, so that the concentration is just that. Because what, you know, if we're, every month, we're going to be handling new ordinance changes and whatever review we have to do. You know, this is, it can get long. And, you know, the focus should be, so if we, and I think we have to declare an LPA meeting, don't we? Don't you have to say that it's a?
You can just have, put that hat on.
Put the hat on, yeah.
That's what we do in other, sometimes, but yeah.
Change the hat. But yeah, close one and then open the other. So if that, if that's something, if you feel that it's going to be a long one, at least that first one where we have to go page by page, it might be beneficial just to have a dedicated meeting for that. Food for thought. Hate to throw another meeting out because I don't want to, trust me on that one.
Well, Mr. Chairman, maybe what we can do is, I can coordinate with Kelly and depending on what is scheduled for, for next month's meeting, we, we may look at the calendar and suggest a special meeting just for this, or if there's, say, just one other item on the next month's meeting, then it, it might, it might work out well just to have it on that meeting.
And when do we have to have this completed by?
There's a deadline, but I think we've, have we passed the deadline, or we, no, we haven't passed the deadline, Jim. Jim knows the deadline.
Yeah, I think it's April.
April, I was thinking March or April, I couldn't remember. That they have, the commission has to pass it, has to be up to the state by then, right? Okay, so we have to give, and they have to have two meetings, so we have to do this so that we comply with what, okay. All right, given that, we'll knock it out.
I think it is the transmittal, what's...
Is it a deadline for the transmittal, so it's for first reading?
No, no.
It's second?
Yeah, but once we get the letter back from the state saying what you want to do is okay with us, essentially, you have a year to do it. And that takes us all the way through second reading.
Second meeting, okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions, any other comments? No. See, now it's our turn to say no.
Just in looking, Carolyn Cassidy, Seven Hudson, in looking at the future land use map and also talking about the different zoning, why is there no distinction between multifamily and high, medium density and high density residential on multifamily? You just called multifamily.
Well, that's, we just carried forward the current future land use map. We didn't make any changes to that, if we need to.
Well, I mean, just in the spirit of keeping things a little bit more onerous than just the basic draft. I mean, wouldn't we want to make sure medium density stays medium density, and is it future, in the future, look at as high density?
Well, whatever we're directed to do, I would go ahead and do it. The future land use map was something that, in our meetings and our review, we didn't feel that was necessary to make an ending there, but we certainly can if that distinction does need to be made.
What is the difference in density between medium and high?
It's a number of units.
Right, I understand.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Big.
Yeah.
Big difference.
And the other thing is too, on the map, the mangrove parcels, you know, we purchased, you still have it as single-family? That's now preservation conservation.
We can certainly change that. Like I said...
Most of that is preservation conservation.
We didn't make any changes to the future land use map, but we can.
And let me clarify, if I could, for just a moment, that you're right. The map that's included here is the map from the prior version of the plan that was adopted in 2019, I think. But you're correct that there have been changes that have designated some other properties as preservation/conservation that were purchased by the town. Those will be reflected on the revised version. This just hasn't been revised yet.
Okay, I think the property to the left, what you have is preservation/conservation, is also preservation/conservation.
I think you're right, yes.
These two.
And also the...
Just, yeah.
At what point would you be sending this to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council? Because they review these all the time.
At the same time, right after we have first reading.
Okay.
So, first reading is both the first reading and the ordinance and transmittal to the Treasure Coast and the other state agency.
Okay.
Thank you. So, the draft that we're reading, is there an expectation that there's going to be another draft that's given to us? This is just for us to get going? Is that what you're saying?
We won't change. Well, the only thing that would be...
The text won't change, but you'll change some of the...
Correct if I'm wrong, Jim, but we do have updated maps that will be provided.
Okay, good. All right. Yeah, so, you know, as much as you can provide, you know, as much updated information as possible. That's a good point. Okay, anything else? Well, it was fun. Hope you enjoyed it too. Anyway, have a good day. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Vote with your feet. Thank you.
Thank you.